Ah, gimme, here we go, that's so much better. What's up everybody? As you can see, I've made my way into a public session by myself. So I'm gonna take full advantage of this and actually do what I haven't done in months. I haven't done anything in months. Resupply my business. Steal some of their supplies back. Let's fill this thing up. Fill up my supplies meter on this, then we'll head over to the meth farm and supplies that thing up. Knock the lost... MCO three bikes. Shouldn't be too hard. I'd like to get one of the Walmart planes and hit them off their bikes with some... Grabbing them. So the fun grabs are one of my favorite maneuvers for any of the plane missions or anything like that. Like the plane missions are, plane missions without some fun grab techniques. In my books. Heading off on my nuke today. Um, I really just hope... That no one is, uh... Fuck you dude. I really just hope that nobody's going to attempt to steal my shit. That was the first one. So, again, I haven't been asleep yet. Destroying my body every day that I do this. But it's okay because I am getting, I'm still getting sleep, so definitely not destroying my body all the way. Be not sleeping for like a week on end when I'm in a fucking sleep coma. Like literally if I'm in a fucking coma probably. I probably wouldn't wake up for a long time. You're probably fucking scared that duck. Zombie! Here we go, here we go, here we go. Hit this one, this one, fucking dare you. I fucking dare you. Aha! Was the first one. Yes, me, yes. Oh fuckin', shit, fuck me. Fucking hell. There's a global signal going out, I'm gonna go into the fucking lobby. No one in the lobby gives a shit that I'm doing this buddy. I don't understand how the internet connection isn't sufficient enough because... I know that nobody gives a shit that I'm doing this. Nobody's gonna tune into the stream hopefully. Dude, I left those two cops behind dude. Like, go ahead, try and find me, I fucking dare you. They probably hear me. This bitch would be loud as fuck in real life. I'm just fucking running from the cops. I haven't even put on the engine upgrade though, just like... And that water's deep enough. Water's not deep enough to fucking go my door. Shallow enough to ride it now. Let's lower me down just a little bit. It's my thing, come on! Sorry, Tex. Oh Jesus. I am so sorry about, nevermind, fucking... Fucking hell! He doesn't care, I don't care I guess. Car's just fine man. Oh wow, I am taking complete advantage of the situation. Seeing as I am nearly, nearly broke. Just nearly broke. Shit! It's a fucking bike! God damn it, you and your fucking stopping in the middle of the goddamn road! There was nothing there! Why the fuck did you stop? I was literally gonna go right... Dude, had she not fucking stopped, I'd have pulled that off. But the bitch fucking said, she said, she said... Stop right there! And I fucking rear ended her ass. Alright, I fucking T-balled that bitch right in the side of the damn door. I fucked her up. Sorry, Angel. I should have put tags so I could play music. I'll just put your puns out. Alright, that would have sucked different micros out of you. I always have to check nowadays. I'm gonna go back into my lockup real quick. My grow house. Phil JT here. Just got word from the grow house. Franny? Alright, let's go to my hangar. I'm gonna hit my hangar up just cuz they can't steal supplies from your hangar first of all. That's funny. That's funny. We're in not a big bit of hurry. Cuz I'm probably gonna pass out around 10 again. Actually around, I actually did pass out at like 10:01 or something like that. I was like, dude, I can't stay up anymore dude, I'm fucking tired. I will force myself not to go to sleep. I have a fucking VR illusions thing on my phone and I have the fucking VR kit right in front of me dude. If I get any of the slightest bit of tired, I will fucking make myself paranoid as fuck. I have that VR illusion shit dude. That fucking shit is no joke, you will trip balls man. Fucking Lemon Haze dude, nah nah nah, Cali Mist, my bad, Cali Mist. Lemon Haze was the day afterwards, Kendall fucking left dude. Kendall missed out on some really good shit. Uh, this is a high story by the way. I brought my VR kit, put on VR illusions. Uh, fucking stood up and I was like, holy shit. This is gonna be great. Whenever we get fucking high. So, I had like $80, I took 50 of it and I was like, okay, so... What I'm gonna do with this is, I'm gonna get some top shelf button and he, at the time he called it blueberry cough. I was like, I've never heard of such strain. He said, well, it's sort of a mix, it's goat and strawberry cough. I said, but why is it called blueberry? He said, well, it's not actually called blueberry, I just call it blueberry cough. I said, well, I mean, what's its actual strain name? And he said, oh, it's called Cali Mist. I was like, ah, interesting, interesting. Well, let me get like 4G's of that. And he gave me a pretty good deal. So, I'm pretty glad about that. 4G's, good deal. You can pretty much work out the math of how much it costs if you have a 4G. Go ahead, 3, 2, 1. There you go, you got it, you got it. Okay, so... Uh, this is basically like part 1 of the story. Part 2, we got home and, not gonna give the name of my bandleader even though you guys are no shade. But Shane has this tiny little whale. It's a little tiny bowl, it's like a whale. It's a little tiny bowl. And, uh, I'm pretty sure everybody knows what tiny tiny bowl is. A tiny, tiny, tiny bowl. Like not kidding, that thing was fucking, like, humorously tiny. But it fucking hit really good. I'm just gonna say it hit really good. Um, so we get there, we bust out the band equipment and I said, okay, let's get fucked up after we do some practicing. And, smoked for a good bit and then, we were like, okay, so you guys are ready to get fucked up? And, we got fucked up dude, like, we smoked like 2G's in that little tiny whale bowl. And then you couldn't fit more than maybe like 0.3G's in there. The little, the little hole. Like you couldn't pack, I can pack a damn good bowl, but you couldn't pack shit in that fucking bowl. So we, we smoked a lot of it just because we thought, like, we smoked 2 fucking nugs dude. Like 2 little tiny nugs, but, like, nothing special. We smoked 2 nice little tiny nugs. And, goddamn, that shit hit so fucking good in that bowl. We were fucked up. And Cali Mist is maybe no more than, what, 13% THC? It's not much, it's like 13%. It's real earthy and it's just, it's, it's really earthy. It's got a real pungent, pungent smell and it's, goddamn, it smelled so fucking dank. And, we put on the VR headset, uh, gave it a go. I said, whoa dude! And, there's a Lemon Haze story, not including the VR headset. Uh, but including some honey whiskey and maple whiskey. And, uh, I'm not finished with the Cali Mist story. But, Cali Mist man, it hits so fucking good, like you have no idea. Like that shit hits man. But, long story short, uh, it got passed around to Kendall and Kendall was on the VR illusions for like... And it's no more than just like a video, just like shit, it's like a 2 minute video and he was on there for like... Fucking hell, he was on there for like 30 to an hour? Like, he was just fucking gone. I tapped his shoulder, he was like, huh? It was great man, I missed that fucking night dude, I really do. Man, those are some amazing people. You need to surround yourself with very, 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 very positive people man. It'll make your life a whole lot better dude, I promise you that. Surround yourself with positive people man, positive influence? Well, we're not really a good influence because "It's illegal to smoke weed." Says, uh, some of the people in the United States. Which I think it's complete bullshit because it shouldn't be because it's fucking medicinal. It's medicinal and it's just for having fucking fun too, like, you can have fun with that shit. Now, I do plan on doing dabs, when I do do dabs, you know my ass is gonna be on fucking Facebook Live. Fucking some shit up. 7 out of 5 narcotics hells, yeah, 7 out of 50. I've exported a total of a million dollars right now dude, like... Like, y'all did. Sell my narcotics real quick, hopefully it's just like one vehicle. Ah dude, is this one the hells yet? Aw fuck, but it's at night, aw shit, and this thing, this thing's fairly fast. You're not gonna lie, this thing's fairly fast. Over, not over water? All of them are not over water. This is gonna be the fucking shittiest one to go through. This is gonna be fairly easy as... This one's gonna be fucking hard. This one's gonna be fairly easy as well. Like I said dude, this thing is fucking, just disgusting. Of course I guess we're gonna have to go... Go the closest one first. On this one. So drop the cargo when you're close. I haven't delivered shit in like a while, so I'm a little bit rusty. I shouldn't wait until daytime to do this when I'm this rusty. We got 20 minutes to do this, this thing flies at an okay speed. Basically what you need to do is you just wait until you're above the bill, like you're like in the middle of the circle and then just... Boom, just like that, that's one. Now, let's head... Let's head right to left, how about that? We wanted that one in the sea last. Just head right to left. Yeah, let's head just right to left because it's basically going in a big circle that way. That way by the way, that way, not, not this way, that way. Fucking hell! Assholes in planes. I'm just fucking bored. Have I attracted someone's attention? I really don't give a fuck. They're lining back up, they're lining back up, fucking hell! They're like the most annoying... Ember! We can drive through this point, uh, it's fairly easy to dodge missiles. I don't have any shit in mind now. I am killing you all the way to my fucking shit. Cool rocket bro, you fucking suck! Okay, so what I can do is I can, I can kinda hover above this. They don't line up on me before. Fucking hell dude, it was almost ended there, I almost ended it right there. I have some of the worst and best luck. See what it fucking does? Right next to me. I will play fucking... Oh yeah, I bet you are fucked. I'm fucked, holy shit! You have 15 minutes dude, I'm making excellent fun. Alright, what they're doing is they're using a strategy. Let's go to go for him so he can line back up, save. Hey friend? If you, if you liked the content, you ever... Okay, so I'm not kind of in my, my chat right now. What is this fruit? Fruity's, amazing time. Found myself a session by myself. One of them died, okay. Amazing. And I'm guessing if, if I'm guessing fucking right on this... Play some fucking chandel here. 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3. 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3. Hey, Angel! I felt like that one, gee. Wazoo! You suck, jackass! Angel, I'm so glad you stopped by, how are you doing and how is school? Tell everyone I said hello. Because like, I talk to you whenever you woke up. As I do like almost every fucking game. You missed my Destiny 2 chills earlier, but I was doing that at like... 4, 5 in the morning? I checked my phone, I was like, holy shit, is it really 6 in the morning? Fucking bastard. He's teasing me, you see him, you see the way he teases me? He's just going Brendan Urie goddammit. Fucking bastard. Now... Fucking, you can buy the laser now, did you guys know that? You can buy the laser. Okay, 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 let's just, let's just, let's just back this up a little bit. Now this thing, this thing picks up speed fairly quick. As you can see, this thing is pulling at 109s. Usually it's pulling at almost, it's pulling in the red usually. That's like 180. Bitch, get the fuck off my ass! Let's fucking shit in the hangar. Oh, I got time to kill your fucking ass, I got time to kill your ass. I got today, I got time today son! I got time today son! Now I got time. Now I got time. You are fucking tanky! Aw, no you ain't. Alright, see when the engine's going out? He ain't playing my ass. Eh, sorry, get outta here! Get outta here! His engine's cut! His engine's cut! Charlie, down to 9er, 9er! And he's down! Now time to... Eh, boy! Hell yeah. 4 minute, aw shit! I have wasted 10 minutes, I just wasted like, 10 minutes, oh my god! I could make this in 4 minutes. And if not, then it's always... Oh, no, 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 the deadline, I'd have still, I'd still have like 10 minutes. With the deadline after, uh, after you... Like, do the packages and stuff is like 10 minutes. I literally got to one of the, uh, to one of my things way down in Toledo Bay with a slow ass like Skylift helicopter. Which was, which was supposed to be some dude from, um... It was the, it was the helicopter from Planes. If, uh, if anyone remembers that. Thank you for not tuning into my session before 10pm. Angel... 40 subs boys were there, were at my goal. Now, let's rotate 45. Then when we get to 50, let's rotate 100. Yeah, I made, I made pretty damn good time. Sea breeze isn't as bad as you think it is guys, stop dogging it dude. Is it worth buying? No shit it's worth buying! Look how fast this fucker is, you can put a Bombay on it too? Put everything on this thing. Just need to stop, right here. Stop! Jesus. 68,000? Ryan's cut. Aw no! He probably just unlocked the fucking lobby, yay! That's not fun. Nice, that's quick money right there. But we aren't done, we're gonna do some more missions. Keebler. Where's Fruit gonna be? Cause I already had to do something for, uh, for today, I don't know what the hell it was, but, uh... I remember he had to do something. Wow, you are a fucking pussy dude. You're a fucking pussy, you're a pussy! How to, how to disable bull shark testosterone for the entire session? What, so you can re-enable it for yourself? What a puss. Remember narcotics is the best because you can get 800,000, 850,000 plus off this. Aw dude, yes, I'm like totally good at this! Perform stunts man! You just better hope that you have a plane at the end of this because this plane really fucking pulls. This plane pulls ass dude. Like this plane fucking goes. Oh, and I got the America one. To the plane, no! It's fucking like, dude, this bitch is bad. Had the Alpha Z1 dude, the Alpha Z1 fucking pulled. Oh dude, look at this, I can just barrel roll the entire time. Can't fight between building 4. I'm gonna beat the champ. Can't beat the champ in his own motherfucking game! My inner between builds is my shit. That's how I lose people in dogfighting, boy. That's fucking impossible, that's fucking impossible. That's fucking impossible. Dino, it's my choice. Good up, bruh. Let's fly under some bridges huh? Ah, yeah. Nightlighting is the best way to do it. Especially between these big buildings right here. All the way down and do it at the very fucking bottom dude, that's all you gotta do. Ooh, the Howard. Ooh, the Howard is slippery. Slippery. That's fucking right there. Fucking snake boy. Taylor Swift! I guess Taylor, like now when she was listening to... Got it. What the fuck, I just night flighted up between that building. Dude, I got all the info to do that shit, man. I gotta like do shit. Fucking, ah! Okay. Give me my vehicle respawn. Thank you. Now let's go to like these narcotics. Now, I know that we can blow up the vehicle, just go onto the beach. I need a whole team of people in here to help me. Fuck! Hey, everybody! Just keep it nice and fucking clean as fuck. Got it? Zoom 1, 7, 7, right above me. Hopefully his ass is fucking friendly. Makes us some work along in a fucking hostile environment. I was fucking trying to hurt you here but... Just blow it up and come back and zoom grab. Which has a gun tub! Kill her again. Yes, get in my way, yes. Aw, yes, screaming all over myself, he just got in my fucking way! I love how people get in your way. Just fucking ignore the fact. Get out of my way! You're in front of a fucking plane! Bitch, my plane's rotor were fucking... Nah, goddammit, you fucking bitch! You skank fucking pussy bitch! Ah, fucking sucks! Oh, hold on, I can call in my fucking actual plane, thank god! I can call in... He's got a microphone, okay? Keep it 1800. Son? Come on? Oh, it's shot, what's up, shot? Twelve minute flight, goddamn. It's a plexus. You need sleep to survive. It's chilly if you sleep. Ow, fuck! I'm gonna have to fucking lobby in a fast hour here. When I finally decide to start doing fucking work, all these people start fucking joining and unlocking the goddamn lobby. Think that's fucking bullshit? I'ma just hope that that son of a bitch... By the airport ain't trying to fucking camp it up. I really do hope. Trying to camp it up. Fashion on this bill. 177. Hey, you're the highest KDA? I have 1.7. Smoking out Strahlers all day. I'm a motherfucking Strahler, it's my... Got all kinds of cash, I'm a fucking rich. I don't know what fucking song this is from. Guess it's actually not, I'm a song. Just some shit that I just made up. Yo, check out my rap. Hold on, I got you, I got you. Check out my rap, it's good. Just 177, I'm trying to fucking shoot my ass up, boy. Goddamn, I can't rap. It's like goddamn, what a line. Shoot my ass up. Like, I for real hope you're not trying to fucking kill me. Ah, man, I would hate to have to go in a fucking wireless lobby. Call everybody I know. Shoot this shit up. I know it sounds like fuck, cause it's a bit weird. Five minutes to spare, boy. So I'm talking about nine minutes. Some trip with me, I fucking sandwiched it and still came back, god. Actually, I think I'm pretty good at it. With the confidence that nobody's gonna fucking try and kill me this long. I'm just bringing my fucking number as mine, eh, 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 fucking tell. Psycho, I should stop right here. That's why I teach myself a lot of fucking idioms. People will kill your ass in this game, and expect it to be funny when you're trying to do something to actually have fun. Cause you need money to have fun in this game. And it's not very fucking fun when someone kills your ass in this game. Then they fucking say, "Hey, man, it's just a game." Motherfucker, it's not just a game right now. I'm trying to do shit, I'm trying to fucking work. I'm trying to have fucking fun. Your stupid ass is fucking trying to kill me and have fun. That's why your ass is broke in this game. I think I'm taking this a little bit too serious. Oh my god. Oh fucking hell, an IGN... An IGN member, holy shit! Ew. Look at my crew. Who do I have online? Fade. Look at all these fucking people, thirty-two members. Not a single one of them are on fucking line. And playing! It's my fucking problem. Not a single one of them are fucking playing, at least.
Don't...
Don't drop that dirk-a-dirk? Don't drop that dirk-a-dirk? Fuck this. I wanna go to war. I wanna kill some people. No one's in the fucking stream right now, right now, are they? Nope. I'm going to fucking war, boys. Hope that IGN member leaves the, aw, fucking hell, he left the session. Hey, roll life! Aw, stack pile. Roll life! Come on, but eh, you know you want it. I know you want it. I know you want it. I know you want it. Come, baby. Sorry, man, I'm streaming, it's all entertainment. Have fun. It's all entertainment, man, have some fun, man, I just wanna go to war with some people, let's go. Let's hit it. Let's kill each other. Come on, let's kill each other, man! If you don't wanna kill me, I, I, I won't kill you, but, I mean... Come on, let's kill each other, bro. Come on. I just wanna kill some people. Uh, alright, cool. I got a shit hangar, I only got two planes built, okay? Oh shit, okay. Oh, come on in! Nevermind, you're, you left. That, or I cannot invite you. Cause you're in a motorcycle. Hey, I cannot invite you, you need to leave what you're, what you're in right now, you need to leave that CEO. Roll life, you need to leave that CEO. Ah, my bad. I don't interrupt missions, I didn't see that you were doing a mission, it didn't really say it on the map. I thought you were somebody trying to chill on a boat. Come on in. Nah, right in front. You need to leave your stuff, leave your CEO. Leave your CEO and I can invite you in. You gotta, you gotta wait two minutes to, to leave your CEO? Oh, here, if you need to collect, I'll land you one of my planes. I'll land you one with the cluster bombs. Hey, man. Guess this is totally the one that I killed you with, but it's okay. Up and, man. You hold right on the D-pad to open up the Bombay doors and you, um, hold to do a cluster bomb attack. Do a carpet bomb. I grant the Thaddeus family. There you go. Swell with my crew, bro. Hey, hey, we got a 227, I wanna go, we're gonna challenge him to a 1v1, at least, but... Uh, hold right on the D-pad. I got you, I got you, I got you. Did I kill it? Ah, you bombed me, but... Yeah, it said you killed me, but it's chill. Is your packet, is your package on the ground? Did you get your package? Ah, that's not good. That's probably why I couldn't invite you to my hangar. You got a hangar? It's good money, man, do, uh, only source narcotics, though. That's the best kind of money. Yeah, man, eight hundred fifty thousand plus. Uh, hangars are, the lowest one is like, 1.4, 1.4 million, I think? Aw, sweet, I just, I didn't have the money in my budget to buy something that expensive. I really never buy something that expensive, cause it's pointless, they all do the same thing. I mean, that's my personal outlook on it. Yo, let's do it. Like, let's fucking go. And I got a, I got a plane with cluster bombs, dude. Do it. Oh, yeah, man. Aw, dude, I was hoping the devil would come and try and kill us. Or maybe even that, that, that high level right there, I want that 516. I like, I like doing a little bit of killing here and there. Got friends who kill like 600 a day. Keep a daily quota. They don't meet their quota, they don't get off. Six hundred, yeah, six hundred a day, I think it's kinda bullshit, like... I did. Yo, send, um... What's this, what's that next to? Alright. Let's hit it. Got my plane with the cluster bombs. Hold on, uh, dude next to me, I don't know what your name, Roll Life. Take a look, press, um... Nevermind, just, just look behind us, sorta, like, look towards the ground behind us. Nah, nah, nah. Aye. Hey, blue work. Um, I'm down for blue work. Eh, I call them motherfuckers nukes. Hey, it's close, I mean, you ain't really gotta put a waypoint, we already on route. I know this map like the back of my hand. Aw, that's a good, that's a good area, dude, anybody tries to fucking take that area, I'll duke the shit out of them. Just fucking doo, 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 doo. Hold on, eh, uh, Roll Life, you wanna get out? Or you wanna keep showing on the plane? Yeah, you gotta pressure here, I'll, I'll, uh, here. Here. Right on drop zone, go. I'll just chill in the, uh, showing plane. Hey, 500, man, come take the area, or try and attempt to take the area, bro. Get way up, huh? Like how the clubwork hasn't even started for me. Hey, man, my luck would be there, be someone with a fucking Hydra in the lobby taking my ass out. Uh, skater, I'm skater, bro, uh, 4200. Yeah, I'm in the plane, cluster bombs. I'm ready to fuck some shit up. Shit, that 516 looks real tempted, man. Or 19, my bad. That 519 looks real fucking tempted. Uh, he's probably gonna be one of the players that's just sitting his, uh, his yacht the entire time, making people think they're gonna come and just... Hit the fucking car? Hey! Hey! Oh shit, still us. No motherfucking ballin'. Cruisin' down the motherfucking street in a plane. Aw, fuck, I think I fucked myself. Go, goddamn! Yo, 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 watch the rockets, man! Made a car go crazy and crash at my plane, man. This bitch is flipping me off! Did you even wanna hit my fucking plane? Uh, shit, I can't get in there. I got this, I got this. I got this. Excuse me, I got this. There we go. Got this. How the fuck I, you got your shit on, uh... You got your shit on friendly fire, I bet, Roll Life, can I test this out real quick? Yo, Roll Life. Nah, he's AFK. Let me test it real quick, is it on friendly fire? Can I test it real quick? Yes, on friendly fire, holy hell. Ah, I don't hide there, ah, fucking, haha! Yeah. Bitch it out like that. Where you going with my plane? That's only a thousand dollars, man, I got the money to pay for it. I didn't really consider it about a thousand dollars, though. Hey, man, I feel you. I only got one car that I drive, it's the Duke, man. You hiding there? You hiding there? You hiding from? Oh shit, I didn't mean to kill him. Okay, guns go away. So damn, that's not going nowhere.
Hello, this is Morse Mutual Insurance, I can do that.
Welcome back to the mic. You're through to your garage, you, uh, need me to bring you a ride? I'll get there as soon as I can. Oh, he's a street fighter now, motherfucker. He's that one backslash, fucking slash him. Slash his ass, there we go. There we go. Like, I don't do that shit. Uh, alright, man, we got you covered. Nothing in your hands, we good. You got, uh, you got entrance to the, this club, man? You got entrance? You got clearance to be in here? One strong ass fucking bat, dude. Goddamn! One strong fucking bat, man! Hey, Ro. Yeah. Basically. Basically. Fly so very high and touch the sky. Never have to ask why it is that I can't fly. Yeah, you play Seven Days? Seven Days, that zombie game. That shit's hella fun. Hells yeah, man. Ah, hell nah, man. I don't know what the hell he stuck on. What you mean? Oh, wait, are we using rockets now? Yo, where's Roll Life, though? Where's Roll Life, though? Hey, glitching like a motherfucker right now. You can't handle the fucking bulletproof helmet. That bulletproof helmet, though. Aw, you gonna pussy out like that? Can't do that. Little do you know, I'm the fucking RPG king, hold on, let me, let me buy some RPGs real quick. Oh, you don't want RPG king right here. You don't want it. You don't want it. You don't want it. Man, I've been here for four motherfucking years, dude. You don't want it! Hit my fucking car. You gonna hide like that? Ah! Oh, I like it! I like that shit. Look at that fucking... Alright. Alright, let's do it! I do that shit all the fucking time. You slam your damn controller, man, you, you slam that controller trying to get a kill. Ah! Ain't gonna run like that, are you? Oh no, wrong both of us right now. Dead! Yo, Roll Life, where you at, man? You didn't, you ain't even over here with us no more. There he is, there he is. Where the hell you been? Skirt! Hey, we just doing a 1v1 right now, hold on. What are we doing, first to ten? Mister, Mister Jam Johnson. First to ten, what's the score? RPG king, boy! Not an RNG kinda person, but RPG... Bullshit, that didn't fucking kill you. That's using third person to its advantage, man. That right there is third person at its advantage! Dead. Call that shit, you ass going down. Die! Got it. Oh, fuck! Damn, that shit landed right next to you, yes, fucking Superman. Aw, you turned off fucking friendly fire. Hey, Jam, turn off friendly fire like that, wait, did I win? Did I win? Think I won? Turning off friendly fire, what kinda pussy move is that? Am I still streaming? Hey, I'm still streaming. What the hell does this dude and his magic tricks? Yo, Ro. What's up with you and them damn magic tricks? Keys and glitches. Me, hell nah. Seventeen and three months, school's for dumbasses. Nah. Said it backwards, school is for dumbasses. Hey, nothing in fucking school that you gonna learn. What the fuck, just shot my car? Is there someone off, uh, radar? Nah, but what I was saying. Alright, nothing that school is gonna fucking teach you that you actually gonna use in real life, other than fucking elementary school shit and middle school shit, the high school shit's fucking pointless. I aced middle school and elementary school, man. Alright, nothing in fucking high school that your ass is actually gonna use, unless your ass is gonna be a fucking scientist, who the fuck is gonna divide this world with a fucking pie? Answer that fucking shit for me real quick and see! See what kinda fucking job your ass is gonna have? Fucking mathematician and shit like that? Hell nah. I'm a fucking motocross rider, boy. I got all the fucking source of income I need right there. Should do fucking YouTube, man. Got more fucking source of income. YouTube's back to paying people. Yo, where'd that Roll Life dude go? He's disappearing off the map. Yo. Georgia at its finest. Did we hit a shot? Etonton. Where you from? Damn, how could I tell, you just blew my fucking car? Nice. Jersey's chill. Seen the worst of its times whenever Jersey Shore was the thing. I said hell nah. Hell nah! I said it was at the worst of its time whenever fucking Jersey Shore was the thing. This dude's a fucking magic man, he keeps disappearing off the map. Aye, I got you. Where the fuck do you keep going? Where do you keep going? Hey! Excuse me, hey, motherfucker, hey. Punch you in the face with this. Where do you keep going, huh? Where do you keep going? Where do you keep going? Got his ass jammed, where do you keep going, huh? Where do you keep going? Where do you keep going? You fucking magic man. No, where the fuck do you keep going, huh? Where do you think you're going? Can't run from my tear gas? Like all the ladies, no, hey! Nuh-uh, nuh-uh. He is pissed, though. Fuck your wrench. Fuck your wrench. Nope. Fuck your wrench. Fuck your wrench! Fuck your wrench! Come here! Fuck your wrench. Fuck your gun. Fuck your gun! Gun ain't gonna do shit now, you're gonna, gonna do shit, you can't hit me. You're just fucking taking these punches like a man. I ain't even phased, your shit's going right through me. I'll fucking do this shit all day. Oh, oh yeah, I got you, I got your ass now, I got your ass! I'm hitting you with the tear gas, man. Take a blunt, uh, pull out tear gas, or pull, pull out anything like a sticky bomb, or a grenade, you can hit me with it, like, punch me, just like, and you can trap the fuck out of somebody like that. Like, I do this shit every fucking day to random ass players, dude. I'll invite them to my, to my little motorcycle club, and I'll put them in that fucking chokehold right there, they can't go nowhere! They can't do shit. Press, uh, there you go. Fucking, hey, man, exchange punches, man, we'll do this to one of his bricks. He's gonna trap his ass, he ain't gonna know what the fuck to do. Man! These punches ain't even phasing my ass. It's cause we're actually timing the punches our fists should collide them right now. Yo Jam? What's good, man? RT4L. Holy shit! Look, a tryhard outfit on a level twenty-seven! Yo, level twenty-seven, come hit me up, man! I wanna get that 1v1 in! Let me get that 1v1! I want that 1v1! Yo damn, bro, it's eight o'clock! Motherfucker, we just exchanging punches like a bunch of hood-ass motherfuckers. Feel like I'm in the fucking bathroom of my middle school, holy shit! Fucking Run21! I will do this shit all fucking day, I ain't going nowhere! One of us gotta fucking break, man! I ran the entire fucking GTA map without stopping that goddamn X button! I'm good! I'm good! Trick is to move your fucking fingers as little as possible. Man, one of us gotta get trapped. You hit me on the top of my helmet. I'm hitting you right in the damn forehead. Aw damn, we're back to this one! This fucking boom, 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 boom! Yo, this Samurai's in the jet, uh-oh! We got a jet in the sky! Samurai, I will grab a fucking laser! Dogfight me, B! I will break for that shit, man! Dogfight me, Samurai! I haven't dogfought somebody in so long. Might win. We're just fucking exchanging punches in this parking lot. Thing is, you're hitting me with a plastic explosive, I'm hitting you with a fucking metal can, that shit's gotta hurt like a bitch! Neither am I! I ain't losing a shit of health! I think my armor that I got on just protects me. You're like punching me in the shoulder. I see blood coming out your shit. This is fucking exciting, I feel like I'm watching the fucking McGregor versus Mayweather fight, man, holy shit! Fucking, uh... Them two girls fought off, man, that shit was... I can't remember who the fuck it was, it was Holly something? And that girl got the shit beat out of her, like she had a broken nose, a busted lip, two fucking black eyes? Fucking busted cheeks, shit, it was fucked! Her face, dude, man, was all kinds of bloody. We're timing these punches. One of us gotta break, man, come on! I can sit here all fucking day long! Until the goddamn sun goes down doing this shit. Jam, come in, get in on this, man! Hell yeah! They're gonna have to ban our fucking accounts, we get back at it whenever they get on ban! Hey, real quick, send me a Firma Quest, man! Skirt! I think I see more blood coming off of you. Hate me. Knocking the shit out of here now. I'm surprised, we lost a lot of fucking blood here, man, I'm surprised one of us ain't fucking light-headed yet. Like, that's a lot of blood on the ground if you haven't noticed. I'm hitting your ass with a metal can and your ass ain't bleeding. I'll sit here all fucking day! There we go, that's what I wanted to do right there. You fucking backing me up over here. Your punches throw me back and my punches throw your ass back. I see your body weaving back going "uh, uh." My body's going "uh," your body's going "uh." Somebody would be fucking dead, oh my god! I just wanna know what the fuck these motherfuckers hate each other so much for where they got each other with plastic explosives in a fucking can? I just gotta know! It was more manly than, uh, this man. Yo, look, uh, look down the street. I was gonna say, look down the street. Hey man, that's all fighting is, no fucking sense. We fight to show off dominance, dammit. Yo Fabaton, come 1v1 me! That's what I want right there. The pop, 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 pop. I got your ass backing up now! I got you backing up now! Bro, what happens when an unstoppable force meets an immovable object? You know what? Think it is? Right there. That's the smartest fucking shit I've heard all day. And I literally haven't been asleep yet, so... Since yesterday. I woke up at six in the afternoon yesterday, man. Oh yeah, dude. I used to experience that shit. Man, I used to go to bed at like nine o'clock at night, wake up at like twelve at night, be like, "Aw shit, I'm late!" That's cause I used to take sleep medicine, but I got insomnia, so I don't really sleep much anyways. And when I do sleep, it's for hours on end. I won't wake up for fucking... Yo, 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 yo. Yo, watch I got, watch I got. No, 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 hey, watch I got, watch I got. Alright, now we good, hold on. Tear gas. Continue. One of us gotta break. Alright. Well damn. Ooh, hold on, hold on, fave! Ah, Ton's coming over here, yay, I get my 1v1! Ton, I want that 1v1, I see that tryhard character. Come, give me my 1v1, goddammit! Give me my 1v fucking 1v... Hey, give me my goddamn 1v... Hold on. I'm gonna chase this person down. Nah, they pulling her into the gun store. Come back here, I want my 1v1! Come here! I want my 1v1! Hold on. Don't call, goddamn. Ooh, you got the Mark II! Just one cool ass gun, man. Come on, man! I just, I want my... Did that night... nah, that, uh, that night vision scope is actually really fucking useful. So is the thermal, the thermal is super useful. You got the thermal?
Morse Mutual Insurance, how can we help you? Sure.
Interesting, interesting. Hello there. This is, uh, this is mine. Another regular fifty kilo. Your character's face is made out of Play-Doh. Yo, watch it, watch it, watch it. Watch it, get outta here, go! Get your ass outta here. Be a hero, buddy. Yo, hop in, let's go for a ride. Wait, does this mean both of us broke? Shit. This is the Duke. Sixty-two thousand dollars. Oh shit! Yo Jam? Oh motherfucker, don't even try it, I'll light your ass up. I will fucking light your ass up, you don't even fucking try. Yo, what's good, man? Yo, where you at, man? Nice. I wanna run by the custom shop, bud. Don't even try it, little kid. What's something, what you need, man? Some bud, hell yeah, man, I'll sell some plug and bug, witchy, let's do it. Meet LSI, uh, LSIA, man. Los Santos International Airport. I've been playing this game for four years, man, I know this game like the back of my hand, all you gotta say is LSIA, man. We're just meeting by the airport in the city, and I know exactly what you're talking about, maybe go in my clubhouse, I know exactly what you're talking about. Meet me at the monolith thingy. In the middle of the city, meet me at the strip club, I know exactly what you're talking about, I know everything in this game. Where's your bud shop at? Where's your bud house at? Damn, bro, we were about to get on the interstate, I could've beat your ass to it! I could've beat you to it, hold on. Hey man, I'm down to drive, cause I got the same one! You got the same one I got? I'm not just down the street, we can fly there, bud. We need to bring a helicopter anyways, it's way easier. Ah, yeah, I'm with, uh, Ro, yo Ro, he's there. I don't know if he's there, like he's been going AFK. Younger start driving. That's that car, that dude, Alex, uh, Alex HD. Ah, he's there. Hey, what the hell are you doing? Hop in this one? What the hell are you doing? Hop in this one with the guns? I'd rather take more secure than faster, bro, any day. Secure versus faster, man, which one you think's gonna win? You may lose a little bit of time, but in the end, your ass gonna be protected. Versus being fast, you may save time. Yo, I think that Samurai kid has the, uh... Either, hey, the new car, the fucking Batmobile, that ain't the one, yeah. I don't think. No, hell nah, I hate the Batmobile, that's just a fast car. That's more fast car, bro, you see that car? Are you wet? Yo, man, what happened? Yeah, what happened, dude? Yeah, you're out of the helicopter. Yeah, but she was in a helicopter like five seconds ago. The hell? Could've sworn you was up in the air with a helicopter like five seconds ago following us. Someone was there too. Better pull up in the spot right now. You smoke anyways? Yeah. Sick. Nice, what was your, what was you smoking? Nah, but what kind, what, 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 what strain was you smoking? Last night, right now, shit. Down here, that's like Top Shelf. You get Grandaddy OG for, what, twenty grand? Twenty. Maybe twenty. Grandaddy Purple, you can get that shit twenty-two. Twenty-eight grand. We got some Lemon Haze. So what? Sick, I ain't never heard of it. Hell nah, man. You ever heard of Lemon Haze? You already know. Uh, come again? Is that, is this, are these fucking strains you naming from fucking Jersey or something like that? Goddamn! We get fucking Cali Mist down here, we get Strawberry Cough, Grandaddy Purple, Grandaddy OG, Skywalker OG... Fucking OG Kush, fucking good shit, man, we get all the good shit. I ain't never heard of this fucking Gelato and... What was the other shit that you just said? I don't remember. Uh, yeah, we outside, you know that, right? We've been outside waiting for you for like a minute. Uh, we're just waiting for you to start a mission, I don't want this helicopter to spawn. Uh, we're just waiting for you to start a mission, I don't want this helicopter to spawn. I'm your designated pilot, boy. Testing my sights. Ah, my favorite. Combat rifle. The carbon rifle. Yeah, I'm gonna back.
Yeah, so these supplies came in with bigger shipment. You're gonna have to dig through the crates to find what we need. When you do, bring them in.
Come on in, bro, come on in. Yo, it's gonna be a lot quicker if you just hop in here, cuz that's all the way down. Yo, Jam, hop in, man. Nah, you way down, alright. Yo, Ro, it's just me and you, man. See you when we get there. Fucking, I'm in a, in an annihilator, boy. I say that car's fastest up there. Keegan. Keegan, are you related to Negan? That is the question we must ask first of all. Yo, watch out, man, you got a car coming straight towards you. Jam, watch out, I'll be listening. Nah, I ain't trying to fuck around, he ain't trying to fuck around. Uh, he's at 111, 111, we get smoked right now. But I'm busy here. The fuck just exploded? Yo, man, we might have to, uh, kill a bunch of guys. Watch it, watch it, we gonna... We don't wanna attract, uh, too much attention right now. This is our ride out. So try not to make too much noise. Uh, there's four hostiles on the boat. Uh, take account of it. Telling someone with a high powered... With my fucking war machine, you're telling me to fucking drop my weapon? First package. Got it. Take a package to the left. Nothing. There should be one right here. Uh... Go down that way. Hey, we got supplies right here. Jump, grab some. Nah, I got you covered, I got you covered, just come get it, just come get it. I'll go ahead and go back to the helicopter. No, 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 you jumped right off the fucking edge. Cops ain't ready for the fucking deal, boy. We're ready for this. Da da. Helicopter doesn't even take much damage. Get your asses back? Alright, boys. Hold on. To the left right here, to the left right here. Right side, right side of the helicopter. Jam, get in! Jam, what the fuck are you doing? Jam's on his fucking own. Guess Jam's on his own, man. Fuck it. Make sure I get to clean the Porsche. Come on, Jam. Play with the team, dude. Ah. Jam's on his own, bro. We'll see you back at the... Fuck. Jam, come on, bro, you gotta... Get in the helicopter, this is what it's for. The longer we sit here, the more time we waste, dude. Hop in the, hop in the heli. I see you, I see you, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Hey, 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 make your way, make your way, I can't, I can't. You're gonna damage the helicopter too bad. Across the parking lot. I gotta clear space right here. Yo, yo, yo. Go clear an LZ for him. Clear LZ. Ah, ah, ah. Good shit, let's hit the road. Hours, come on. We gotta keep this heli up. Fucking Blackhawk, man, we got a Blackhawk. Oh yeah, fucking shoot, guys, shoot, go ahead. I can position you where you can shoot. I'm just gonna go fucking pilot all day in this game, I have Gucci. Get ready to jump out if anything happens. Passing over someone, man. Oh shit! This is bigger than I thought it was, holy fuck!
Resupply successful, long journey out.
Good missions, bro. Uh... That was the guy, lemme, 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 uh, you just follow him. I don't see him. Oh, he's purple guy, low city. Got you. Yeah, man, I'm here. Just waiting on next mission, bro, I'm at, uh... I got a good ol'... Yeah, we can. Hey, um... Hop in the helicopter and I'll take us there. It's just down the road, but... Good money for a quick, uh, quick mission that now, uh... Level 411... Uh, yeah, 411, is gonna try and come for it. I'm gonna check that, uh, that dude's KD, just for security purposes. Uh, I can call mine too if you want. It's probably gonna spawn right across the street from where we're at right now.
Hello, this is Pegasus Lifestyle Management, how can I help?
Ah, I fucking told you.
Great, so it's available for pickup at our nearest location, sir.
Yeah, mine did. Nah, I don't think mine's fine, mine didn't spawn.
Hello, Pegasus Lifestyle Management, how can I help you? Thank you, sir, your specialist vehicle is now ready for you at our nearest pickup station.
Mine is not. I don't think yours is too. Is yours? Hold on. Uh... Pegasus is fucking stupid.
Hello, you're through to Pegasus Lifestyle Management, how can I help?
This is right fucking here, dude.
So your specialty vehicle is available for collection right now, we hope you're very happy, sir.
Well, it's because I got everybody in the helicopter. Hold on. Ah.
Hello, this is Pegasus Lifestyle Management, how can I help?
What the fuck?
Great, so it's available for pickup at our nearest location, sir.
Move that blazer real quick for me. Hold on, that, that Ronald Cutie kid's getting fucking muted. Ronald Cutie's one of them fucking assholes who play music in the mic because he thinks it's fucking cool. He's like, "Yo, man, I got a nice ass speaker, lemme just show you how shitty it can fucking sound." He's just like, "Hey..."
Hello, Pegasus Lifestyle Management, how can I help you? Thank you, sir, your specialist vehicle is now ready for you at our nearest pickup station.
Is there a tank there? Uh... I'm gonna go down here and go, uh... I never got around to IDing that 411. If he's anything over a 1.50, we fucked. He's a 1.38, we good, I'm still the highest KD in the lobby. He's a 1.38, we good. I'm still the highest KD in the lobby. Taking on only tryhards. That's what I do. Why you think I came out here to do my... Because she wouldn't move? Like, he was asking you to move and stuff like that. He's trying to call his tank. He's trying to call his tank. Yo, it's, um... I don't know who the fucking is.
Hello, you're through to Pegasus Lifestyle Management. How can I help? So your specialty vehicle is available for collection right now. We hope you're very happy, sir.
Fuck cargo bar. Cargo bar, please, man. I only need you this once. Fuck cargo bar. Hey, I already got mine, man. I know where mine is right now. I just need to get a fucking cargo bar. 'Cause I ain't about to drive that bitch all the way down here and risk it getting damaged. I think we good. I don't think it might go for us. Yo, bro, you mind, uh, chilling at the, at the area? Shut up! Yo, I'm gonna try to get my tank. Who's in the water? The hell that is in the water, bud? Yo, mine? I tried to get mine to spawn that far away just 'cause I know nobody is, uh, like, ain't nobody over here. Come on, Mr. Cargo Bar. I need a cargo bar. I don't wanna have to drive that fucking shit. Yo, man, come on! Buzzard. Yeah, Buzzard's good. Everybody fucking hard. I'm getting my tank. Yo, I got my tank. Yo, y'all got a guy coming to watch our war, will you? Nah, 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 not you. Different colored person, man. Just a white dot. Wait, how many, how many tanks we got? Yeah. The biggest grab? Nice. Nice, that crap at first. I was about to say, "What the fuck?" Yo, how much money you got, Jim? Yeah, just a question, man. Just a question. Nice. I'm at, uh, I'm sitting coolly at $284,296 and $36,000 in my pocket. Some guy... There, right way next to me. That's mine, boy. Nice! We got three tanks! Ha 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 ha! Three fucking tanks! Yo, I think we got a guy coming. Purple dude. He's a 110 though. Man, don't get fucking smacked, Shocking. Don't get fucking smacked, dude. Won't be a fucking wise idea, man. Nah, he's on a rocket bike. Nah, man, if he is on that rocket bike... He's coming to fucking... God, you are stupid. Hey, I'm pulling up at the spot real quick, hold on. It's time, my fucking ass. This bitch gonna die. I got the fucking money to pay for your sorry-ass shit. Get your rocket bike heaven ass out of here, boy. What the fuck? It didn't even lock on to him. And the fuck? Ah! Ah! Good kill. Get the fuck out of here, pussy bitch. Hell yeah, I'm good over here. Concentrate like a motherfucker right now. Uh-oh, uh-oh. Yeah, boy! Ooh, he got me, he got me! Ha 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 ha! Y'all think he going for my tank, though? Ha ha ha! He got me. Bring that ass here, boy. Bring that purple fucking bitch ass over here. I'll put on my fucking tryhard pants, boy. Fuck you mean. Pussy bitch! These guys, it's up one of them. Yo, kill that little white dude before he gets to my tank. Nah, man. It's fucking 4v2. Of course they ain't taking this spot. I'm gonna have a hell of a hard fucking time doing it. Act like I fucking don't see you, bitch? Tank time! Back in the tank for once. Being in passive mode. He's on full-on kill mode. He's AFK. Get you some free kills. Take his ass, hold on. Move, 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 move. That fucking shit ain't gonna do nothing. You better start running, motherfucker! I used this shit for a fucking month on end, boy. I'm gonna be dirt today. Uh-oh. Jesus, a fucking little pussy bitch? I'll get another one of these motherf... Hey, Shocking's gone. Good fucking bye. One down, what are your little pussy bitches left? Alright, yo, we good. If I got to, if you got to, man, go get you another one. Yo, I got a, I got a friend over here. Hold on, who's that? E-Rock. Yo, I've, damn, I ain't talked to him in a long time. Should I check if one of my friends is over there? I can't talk to him anymore here. I don't think that Killos kid's stupid enough to come back here. If he is, then that motherfucker's brain dead. That motherfucker's brain dead, then. I see you coming. I see your ass coming. You ain't. I know where you're at. If I want to, I'ma get another fucking tank, so you wasting your damn money. It only cost me $200 to get a tank. It's a lot of tanks you gotta go through, buddy. Shut the fuck down. Ha 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 ha! No, I got us covered, man. Y'all can just chill. Y'all can just chill, man. I ain't gotta do shit. Skewer. Uh, definitely, bro. Not playing on it. Hello? He's gonna blow it up anyways, hold on. Blow this bitch up on a building. He finally decided to use rockets instead of trying to snipe the fucking shit. There you go. I tried to kill myself in there. I'm trying to sit there and kill myself.
Hello, this is Pegasus Lifestyle Management. How can I help? Great. So it's available for pickup at our nearest location, sir.
This fucking child just called me a fucking bitch. Ha ha ha! Oh my god. Child, get to school. Child, get to school, man. Get you smart, even though... Nevermind. Don't fucking come over here. Nah, man, we doing a stand your ground. We got 45 seconds, then your ass can come, man. What's your KD? Yeah, find that KD. Find that KD, then your ass can come. Cash! I ain't got shit to do today, whatever you guys... A sixty sev... A .67. Oh god, that's disgusting. Yo, let the kid come into, uh, to the motorcycle club. Shocking, I will beat your fucking ass. Do not try me. Hell out of my damn face. Hell out of my fucking face with that bullshit! Dude, he's glitching, he's glitching. He's fucking looking at me glitching. What the fuck? His ass is glitched! His ass is glitched, yo, 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 yo. His ass is glitched. Get the fuck out of here, pussy fuck. That dude was fucking like, T-posing. I don't know, I don't know who Mick is. Ah, me boy. Go and try and get that free kill if you want. God damn it, I killed myself! Fuck! Ha ha ha! Well shit. Ah, I guess I'll just stay and kill Mick for a little bit. Nope, he's gone. Alright, Mick, but, uh, fuck it, kill us. Buddy, don't, because you will get spanked. No offense, but you will get spanked. Heavy. Like, I will fuck you up. Yo, man, I didn't even send a firm quest to roll live. Yo, that sucks. What the fuck's man is this? Hello? I'm giving you a chance. I'm giving you a chance. I'm giving you a chance. Get the kill. Just get the kill. I'm giving you a chance. I get... Dude, I got fucking ran over in this, dude. Jesus. He got so many hits on me. I got fucking ran over and his ass still couldn't get the kill. God damn. Your ass fucking sucks, dude. You fucking suck, you jackass! Damn! It's gotta hurt sucking that goddamn bed. Yo, invite that Venom kid. MC, get the fuck outta here, dude! I ain't gonna fuck with you, but you better get up outta here! I'mma give you a fucking warning shot, boy, you better get up outta here! Get out! I don't wanna kill your low-level ass. Go, I don't wanna kill you, go! This dude, man, get the fuck outta here, bro, I ain't trying to kill your low-level ass. Ah, yeah, you're low-level, so go at him. I just wanna see what rank he is. MC, nah, hell nah, that motherfucker's mine, he's a, he's a 112! That bitch is mine, I don't care who the fuck he is! Hell nah! Bitch, you, you crossed the path of fucking sympathy a long time ago! As soon as your ass became triple digits, your ass crossed the path of fucking sympathy. You crossed the path of sympathy a long ass time ago, boy. Oh, nailed him! The king of RPGs, thank you, thank you, thank you. Motherfucker, you, don't even! He tried to buy- He tried to use my explosive! I don't know why he keeps fighting, man. You crossed the path of sympathy a long time ago, my friend. You're in my neighborhood. The country! I'm from fucking Edington. What's my tank? What are you shooting at, motherfucker? This isn't the goddamn military, these bullets don't fly that fucking far? One more, right in the, right in the back, right in the back. Got his ass, there we go! I unloaded like, three clips on his ass! Just shitshots. Yo, what's good, bro? Yo, what's good? Man, he crossed the path of fucking sympathy a long goddamn time ago. Ain't no sympathy for you, bitch, get outta here! Yo, Mo? Wanna see something chill? Hold on, first... Wanna see something cool? Yo, look, I got the rocket launcher, I got the firework launcher. Come back this way, MC, you fucking bitch. Do you, are you aware that he's coming back right now with a plane? And he crashed it. Yo, who the fuck is Miss Parker? I was mugged for 10k dollars, boy, what the fuck? Sit your ass down! Blata, blata, blata. Yo, MC, get the fuck out that plane! Get out that plane, boy! No fucking way. Still motherfucking kicking! How the fuck'd you let him kill you? Nah, it's Joe, it's Joe, I was fucking with him. Ah, ain't no sympathy for you, bitch ass, boy! You crossed my line of sympathy a long time ago. I'm so confident that he's not gonna kill me, I'm gonna deposit all of my money into my fucking bank right now. Get outta here! Oh yeah, let's fucking get it, let's do it! Askada! You know, I feel so fucking, I feel so bad for that kid right now. Pyrex, what's good, G? Look, he's going for the tank, he's going for the, yeah! Go for the tank! Go for the, yeah! Yeah, do it, buddy! Get that tank! Get that fucking tank! The tank's all yours, little man! Get the tank, it's all yours! Nah, 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 Mo City, Mo City, Mo City! Leave him alone, leave him alone, leave him alone. Hey, MC, the tank's all yours! Come on, the tank's all yours, man, do it! What are you, about 45 playing this damn game? Don't you got a life? Tank's all yours, buddy. What's with all these damn rednecks in this fucking game with their, with their shit, uh, with their like, M9s and shit? I ain't the 12-year-old in this fucking situation, I'm 17, motherfucker! Right in the spawn. That was intense. Oh, you almost had it! Gotta be quicker than that! They do move in herds, haha! Rip it to your motherfucking fences! Who's Jacob Greider, who the fuck is that? Leave my lobby, this is my fucking lobby, boy! I was in here before everybody! I was in here before every fucking body, boy, what the fuck do you mean?
Hell's nah, brother, I ain't on no damn build. What you talking about, brother? What you talking about? Nah, what you talking about, brother? I'm talking about shit. I don't know what you talking about, brother. Sound like Rusty from, uh, Squidbillies. Yo, Obama hit him with it.
Yo, what's good, brothers? How, how are all of you doing? Ali, you are about to get served, something so goddamn hard and tasty. I call it, my nut. I'm sorry, that's... Yo, MC, you are about to get served, something I call my nut, from my tank. Kachow! Ain't about time for you to go to a fucking retirement hell, uh, home old man? Uh, boy, get roasted, you are in my house, now, bitch! Papow! Chik-ching, chik-chang! Ching-a-ny-choo! No, baby, it is not a voice changer! Yo, Jimmy, how you doing? Br- 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 brother?
Yo! Yo, who sounds like, uh, fucking Cali Muscle in here? Yo, Blata, why the fuck you sound like Cali Muscle, bro? Who, yo, this is Skater, bro, man, why you sound like, uh, Cali Muscle? God damn, man! I'm a long time subscriber for, uh, Cali Muscle, man, I've been subscribing to Cali Muscle for like, two years now, man. Is Cali Muscle the fucking lover? Cali Muscle ain't love! I don't know, but, uh, that, that Blata, that Blata kid sounds like, uh, Cali Muscle, haha! Yo, Blata da! Where you at, man? How much you bench, Chris? Yo, Blata, how much you, uh, how much you brim- how much you... Damn, man! Race me, motherfuckers, race me! Yo, real quick. Jim, get next to me and race me, bro! Three, two, one, go! Oh my god, I'm winning, ah, I'm winning! I'm winning, oh, look at me, I'm winning! Look at me, bro, I'm like a pro racer right now, dude, look at me! No shit, I'm in a fucking tank! Yeah! Yeah, hell yeah, look at me, I'm winning, I'm the tank guy! I'm the best fucking racer in this, in this entire lobby! Thanks to my tank with mods, bro, I, I totally have mods on my tank. Oh my god, bro, it's a fucking joke! Jim, I'm racing you to the other side of the water, bro? I don't know, it's gonna be close, man! Dude, I heard fucking, I heard Blata talking and I thought I was in a fucking lobby with Cali Muscle, holy shit! Ah, dude, nah, he left, fuck! It was Cali Muscle! No! Wait, was that Cali Muscle? Well shit, it might have been Cali Muscle, haha! That's that big-ass fucking bodybuilder dude! That motherfucker will eat your ass for breakfast, haha! That dude will fuck you up, dude! Hey, I win, yay! Cali Muscle is a fucking tank, man! I see his ass play Fortnite and stuff like that all the time, but I ain't never gotten to a lobby with him. It's like trying to get into a lobby with that dude Vanos Gaming, that shit's like fucking, one in a million. Come in and rook around? Yes. Hey, nice fucking mugger, you idiot! He didn't even mug me, haha! Hey, Omof, nice fucking mugger! He got there just in time as I got to the counter and he couldn't fucking mug me, haha! Oh, kill you? Okay. Oh, Krake148, boy! Use the remaining balance to kill myself?